I would check it just to have a lunch.
I literally just had a lunch.
Oh, yeah. You ever gone and had the lunch? I would check it just to have a lunch.
I literally just had a lunch.
For me, that's like.
They're gonna.
I understand.
Welcome to North Syracuse. Set just for the support of education. We're gonna start with letting you play with Miami.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Didn't do very well with the most stand. The foundation by your God into this vote.
Thank you. We're gonna begin with a moment of silence for the following. Robert Prowl Senior, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Joanne Vassar, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Alan Dowling, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And John Clark, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna begin today with a single presentation, a strategic plan update and from Mr. Stone. So, Mr. Stone, when you are prepared. Looks like you have, oh. Yep. You've brought somebody who you know is gonna make this a high quality presentation. Thank you very much. Oh, stop.
At least it's such an integral part of this, which you can plan. I thought it made sense to invite my colleague here to present with us. All right. Oh. What do I need to do on the screen? Okay. That's what I thought.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the invitation to present this evening. For those at home who don't know, my name is Greg Stone. I'm Director of Elementary Education, and I've got a colleague with me this evening.
Hi, I'm Lisa Goldberg, Director of Social Emotional Learning and Social Studies.
Okay, so this evening, we are presenting on the North Syracuse Strategic Plan, providing an update to the Board of Education and Community. So I want to zoom out again and Board, I just passed out copies of the strategic plan, so you can kind of dive into it again as we're going here. But really, when you're looking at the strategic plan, there's really two major components to it as far as action items and really getting into the work. And it's been identified as two separate areas, which is the district focus area. So those are kind of the big picture, pre-K through 12 committees that are doing work across the district in order to read our strategic objectives. And then we have the building goals, which are more building-based goals, and they certainly connect each, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So just as a reminder, those district focus areas include cultural competency, which we're gonna dive into in a few minutes with Lisa. Student support system, I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And an ongoing commitment to professional learning. So that's the overall district ones. Over on the building side, and the board is reminded that the buildings have all presented in the beginning of the school year. They presented on graduation rate. Reading proficiency. And emotional competency. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. The purpose of tonight is really to focus more on that left-hand column, but I'll give a quick overview of the building goals as well. So this language comes right out of the strategic plan. And I draw everyone's attention to, really, go ahead and read through, but it's really about the leadership teams being charged with developing the strategies and measurement tools needed to reach the goals. And what this is really talking about is that the intent of this this plan is to make sure it comes alive. And so by having building actionable goals, our buildings are committed to the plan, they're setting their goals, they're presenting them manually, they're measuring their growth. And the same for the district side of things, as we're doing these district committees. It's important that we do annual presentations or more to show, you know, our progress against these goals and show how we're actually closing those gaps. So as a reminder, those three building level goals, I want to speak to those right now, just again, to remind everyone of how this all works. So as the strategic planning team was working through this process, an 18-month process of creating this plan, we continually came back to that focus question of what do our students need in order to succeed in life? And we came back to three major components that through a lot of conversation, data deep dives, as well as staff, community, student, parent surveys, really seeking feedback, we landed with really three areas for us to focus on at the building level. We said that in order for our students to move on to their post-secondary pathway, they have to graduate high school. There are almost no opportunities if you don't have a high school diploma. And what's important about these graduation rates, as the board is aware, is that each of the buildings set their goals around this. So even if you're in elementary school, you set a goal around how are we supporting as an elementary school, the goal of graduation rate? That might be chronic absenteeism at the elementary level. And that progresses. And I think what's important also to point out is that each building is unique, and each building has its unique population. And therefore, it's important for them to measure all of that and identify how that goal is gonna fit into their unique community aligned to the district plan. So our buildings presented on their graduation rate this fall. And again, next fall, they will present again, so you can get an annual reporting of how they're doing, how they're measuring it, and how they're progressing toward their goals. So again, this past fall, our buildings presented on their reading proficiency. And again, the district goal is that all of our students will be proficient readers. Again, the committee was asked, what do our students need to succeed in life? They have to graduate, and they have to be able to read proficiently on grade level or above with comprehension. And so that's a major, major component of our strategic plan. And then last, our buildings presented this past fall on emotional competency. Again, we said they gotta graduate, they've gotta be able to read with proficiency and comprehension, and they have to be ready to lead productive lives beyond high school. And so it's preparing them emotionally for college or career or other pathways, so they can be successful and they have the skills they need in order to move on to whatever their next goals are in life. So those are the building level goals. Tonight, we're gonna spend a little bit of time giving you an update on the three district focus areas. So as a reminder, the three areas are cultural competency, which Lisa's gonna talk about her committee and the work that's going on around that. I'll spend a little time speaking to student support system, specifically the work we have around multi-tiered systems of support. And then we'll close out with a little discussion around professional learning in the district. So I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa with cultural competency.
So is this one, this one is working too? Yes, I'll use this one. So when we talk about cultural competence, we're talking essentially about building culture and district culture. What does that mean? Creating welcoming and affirming environments. And you'll see in the corner, there's the New York State Education Department logo. Why is it there? Well, this is something that the state has issued a framework around. And so it it really is a commitment to creating these environments that make all people feel welcome and safe. Moreover, it is a focus on the idea that people are safe enough to grow and find themselves represented and reflected throughout the system, and where they understand that everyone is treated with respect and dignity. Lastly, a welcoming and affirming environment. And again, this language is from the state, is an environment that ensures all cultural identities, including race, ethnicity, age, gender, sexual orientation, disability, language, religion, socioeconomic background are affirmed, valued, and used as vehicles for teaching and learning. In short, we want our schools to feel welcoming and embracing of everyone, so that all kids know that they belong and they are expected there, and we want them there. So there's a lot of work in place, much of which I have spoken with you recently about, but I wanna just talk about some some of the work that's going on. If I were to talk about all of the work, I would be here a long time. So one of the things we're very excited about is that there is a pilot of an approach to social emotional learning that is currently being piloted at Cisrool, and that's called Ruler. And Ruler is an approach that comes out of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Ruler stands for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating. And it is really an approach that says, when a person, and notice I'm saying a person, not just kids, but the adults in a system too. When a person feels something, they, actually, there's a minute between the feeling and the action they choose to make in which they can decide how they're going to move forward with that emotion. And the more that we can recognize and understand what we're feeling, figure out what it's really about, express it in positive ways, and hopefully get back down to baseline, the better off we'll be. So it really puts students and adults in charge of their emotional well-being. It's developing an emotional vocabulary and helping folks understand that there is a way forward when you have uncomfortable feelings that can really ultimately be a good use of your energy and time. The building is using time monthly at their staff meetings to focus on ruler with some professional learning happening. Another thing, as you know, is we are conducting the BIMAS, BIMAS standing for Behavioral Intervention Monitoring System, universal screeners. And this year, what we've done is we've created a series of trainings for representative teams from all of our buildings so that they can learn the DataWise Protocol, which is a data analysis protocol out of Harvard, so they can understand what the data is saying, and then make that data actionable. So what's coming up in February is that Jackie Beck from Bosse's will be leading our teams in a training on what intervention strategies to use once the data has been analyzed. Last month, actually, I should say before Christmas, Kim Mackey from CineRic did a training that walked us through the DataWise Protocol. What we're finding is that we have an enormous amount of data, and our teams are really good at analyzing it. The tricky part is how to make that actionable, what to decide to address first, what intervention strategies to use? How do we know when those strategies have been effective? And how do we know when it's time to move on? So this is really exciting because it's really taking an area that our system, I believe, needs growth in, and and we're trying to address that and equip teams to be able to take that step and make the data actionable. We're continuing this year with our monthly mental health themes. You'll notice that January are the six dimensions of wellness, and February is healthy relationships. At the elementary level, with six dimensions of wellness, this will be addressed by the PE staff. And at the secondary levels, there will be lunchtime games around wellness with prizes. They were wildly popular last year, and we hope they will be this year again. February will be focused on, at the elementary level, No One Eats Alone. It's a program that encourages kids to connect at lunchtime. And at the secondary level, it will be PS I Love You Day. This is again, an annual day that forms connections between kids and is around suicide prevention. We also are just finishing up Suicide Safety Refresh for staff in every building, where staff learn or relearn the warning signs when students are in distress and are trained in making a handoff, connecting students with support in our counseling suites. We've also embarked on crisis team trainings this year. We had three sessions last year, and we'll conclude the series of six sessions this year. And this is, we want to be prepared when hard things happen, when crises happen. How will our buildings respond to support students, staff, and the community as necessary? Our food distribution program continues to expand, as does our civics program, and these are all really contribute to the well-being of everyone in our community. And lastly, I'm sorry, expansion of restorative practice training. I believe I spoke with you about that at the last meeting. I won't repeat myself, but that continues forward. And a new approach, taking tiny bites of SCL, taking high-impact but low-preparation strategies to integrate different aspects of social emotional learning into lessons in every content area and at all levels. So some of the ways that we are hoping to build our cultural competency, creating a culture where everyone feels welcome.
All right, thanks, Lisa. That leads really well into this next slide, which is the next district focus area around student support system. So everything that Lisa just spoke of is very much interconnected with a multi-tiered system of support. And in fact, they go hand in hand. And so I'm gonna try to do my best to explain a little bit of what that is and then where we're at currently. Lisa and I work very closely between these two areas. In fact, Lisa's on the next committee that I'll speak of. So first, just to clarify, when we're talking about a student support system, in, you know, the older model of of schools, many of us heard about RTI, Response to Intervention. And that that model is very much focused around academics. It's about ensuring we have systems in place that are catching a student who's struggling, immediately intervening and giving them a different level of support based on what they need academically. The shift we are making in the district and have been working on for a while, and is a central point of the strategic plan, is shifting to a multi-tiered system of support, which is an MTSS model. The difference, as you can see on the two screens, is RTI was academics. Now we're saying MTSS is really about academics, behaviors, and social emotional learning. If you really think of it from this way, if we're expecting our students to learn academically, but they're coming from a situation where maybe they're not, they don't have enough food, or there's other things going on in their life, and we expect them to still learn at high levels, we have to address those other needs as well. And so a multi-tiered system of support is about looking at the whole child. It's about looking at a preventative model, identifying where there's a struggle, and immediately having a system of intervention. Really, it's about building a system within our school district so that the teachers and the staff have everything they need, and that we have the tools and everything necessary in order to support students wherever they may fall or wherever they might be struggling, to ensure that no one slips through the cracks, not just academics. So speaking a little bit about where we're at with as a district and where we're going around this district focus area. So the North Syracuse MTSS Committee formed initially in 2017. So this is a group that's been around for a while. Prior to this, it was actually called the RTI Committee. And so as we transitioned, we transitioned the name of the committee as well. The membership ranged anywhere from eight to about 15 across the years. It's always historically been a group of teachers and administrators, and it tried to have a good balance there. Currently, we've just brought in several new members to balance that committee back out as we kind of reform, re-norm, and look at some new goals. But in the past, this is important because all of this past work plays into where we're moving in the future. So it's building upon the strong foundation. So if you go back several years, this is the committee that did a lot of work around mission, vision, and branding in the district. This is the same committee that spent a lot of time updating the RTI plan and providing professional development around RTI back in 2019. We had a big shift and push across the district around professional learning communities in 2020. Of course, we had a little bit of hiatus there during COVID, and now we're back at it full swing with really getting to this multi-tiered system of support. And you can see in the bottom right there, a graphic that was created a while ago. Really, this is about taking a lot of the things that are currently in place and putting them all into one model. So a lot of the work we do is about making those connections and building a system so that people know how this whole thing functions. That's a major component of the work. Another part of the of the of moving forward is really talking about the long-range planning. So we know that the strategic plan goes through 2027. Our goal is to have a robust framework around multi-tiered system of support for pre-K through 12, so that every staff member, every person in the organization knows exactly what is expected and how we intervene and how we support students, and knows the tools and strategies and resources that we have to do that. And so there's a lot of training that comes with this. There's a lot of looking at different types of programs and different tools that will be necessary, as well as really just organizing everything in a manner that takes all of this and puts it into a framework that's usable. So a lot of planning is going into this at this point. I think really what's important here, when you look back at those district initiatives in the second bullet, you can see we've had some nice, small successes and pockets of that across the years. The struggle has been, we've never had a really clearly defined goal as a district in order for us to really latch on and anchor to and build from. With the strategic plan, that gives us a really clear goal. So this is now going to be something that can be worked on across the district. Everyone is working toward the same goal, and it's put in writing what the expectation is of what we need to accomplish. And this is a big one. This includes a lot of stakeholders across the entire system. And so that's gonna evolve as the committee evolves as well. Okay, so that's MTSS. And then, of course, you know, I have to point out, this was a really important part for the committee when we were finalizing the strategic plan, is ensuring that not only are we going to be looking at and addressing these deficit areas and really working toward building a stronger capacity, but we want to make sure that there is a commitment to high-level, high-quality professional development. We're not gonna just put forth something and say, okay, go ahead and do it. We need to make sure we're aligning our professional learning to the strategic plan in a high-quality way. And so that's a major commitment of the strategic plan. So that's a summary of where we're at, and we'll be happy to report out as we continue really building these systems and working through these different committees. Are there any questions from the board?
I'll start, I guess. So that graphic you pointed out, the umbrella. So I just want to understand this. So RTI is not being replaced by MTSS? Is RTI part of MTSS?
Yes, perfect.
The umbrella would be, we could label the umbrella.
We could say MTSS is that umbrella, yeah. A lot of these fit within a multi-tiered system of support. These are just some examples of the pieces that are kind of floating out there right now.
So and I'm not trying to be a pain, I'm just curious here. So you referenced the goals from all the building presentations, and they all had the same goals, but almost every one of them had an initiative to deal with chronic absenteeism. Where would that, which one of these things under that umbrella is targeting that, I guess, would be my question? Or maybe there's multiple things.
And I think the way you could look at that would be more more of this system on the right. When when we build, when we have this framework fully formed, there would be a component of absenteeism within this, and then a stepwise approach of, so what do we do at the tier-one level to get our students in the door? How do we form relationships? How do we do all that? What do we do then if students are starting to struggle? So it's about within this triangle over on the right-hand side, putting in there, so chronic absenteeism would fall within that, and we would have a procedure in place. So we have those procedures already in all the schools. The the struggle is it's one of many procedures. And so this this framework is about putting all of them into one area that's cohesive. And that's the part that gets really challenging, because you're taking a lot of systems and already processes that are in place, but you're putting it in a manageable way that's in one framework. And that's the that's the work over the next five years is really to take all those pieces, what's missing? And we have to address that. And then what do we currently have and put it into something that is a workable framework? Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. Does my question make sense, I guess? I mean.
Yeah, no, this is, I'll be honest.
The BPTs, and it seemed to be a critical piece that everybody thought they needed to focus on first before they could really start making any progress.
Yep, and it falls right within this framework, absolutely. And it ties to, a lot of this work is gonna be very interconnected. In fact, and Lisa can speak to this as well, during the strategic planning process, we said, you know, graduation rate, is that a product of? Or is that a goal in itself? You know, and when we had these deep conversations, where we really landed was multi-tiered system of support framework is what encompasses all of these things that we talked about into one area. So it's taking all of that and putting it into a singular framework. But it is complex. It's not a simple task. And you look at every surrounding district, you're gonna see, most districts have a very similar goal. Some are more successful than others, but it is ongoing work, and we strategize with some of the surrounding districts as well. It's just a lot of things trying to put into it one cohesive system that functions.
Thank you.
The food distribution enhancements, does that include research for grants? So what does it encompass?
So we are really fortunate in this district in terms of the relationship that we've built with the food bank, as well as some grant-funded resources. So when we talk about this, we're really talking about creating this program based on, if you will, a shoestring budget. But because we have been the beneficiary of a lot of donations, we are doing relatively well at this point. Did I answer your question?
Mostly, the other part was, I know something I think Bob and I, Mr. Crabtree, believe in or would like to see happen is all the kids getting fed. And is there grant money for that or grants available to possibly get that implemented?
I think I think that's a great question, and Dan looks like he wants to chime in.
Well, we're currently looking at that, and Lisa and I have been talking, and we had a meeting, and community schools is really being pushed by New York State. And there is grant money, and there is a program that is being looked at, and Bosse's has a co-sur for that. And we met with Bosse's just the other week. We have a follow-up meeting with them. And so I think to answer your question, the answer is yes, there is some some funding for it. And how we choose to engage is going to be the next step.
Excellent, one probably very easy question. What are the six dimensions of wellness?
You would ask me that, and I don't know them off the top of my head, but I would certainly, I will send them to Jill, and she can email them out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
You want, those are the goals. They're very lofty goals. Nothing wrong with them, I love them. Just, I wonder, when you talk about like reading proficiency, grade level, grade level and above, what? And you say you're gonna use the universal screening tools? What tools have we got there? And what do we got for those kids who are always gonna have a hard time reading?
It's a great question and one we spend a lot of time having conversation around. So to answer the first part, at the K8 level, we use a universal screener called Ames Web, which you've heard me probably speak of before. And that will tell us where students are, or where the students are compared nationally. So we can kind of get some of some averages, and we can see if a student is pretty much what we'd consider on grade level, above or below, and how far. So to answer that second part of the question for K8, that's where we have a tiered approach. So if a student is falling, let's say in the 20th percentile or below, we have multiple different levels of support. That could include an intervention block, it could include time with a reading teacher. It might lead to a special ed situation, but it's a very progressive approach. So we're always trying to prevent, close that gap quickly through a research-based program and get them back into general education setting so that they're 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 back on on grade level. At 912, we use a different screener, we use the reading inventory. That's something that is being looked at for the future, so there might be some changes there. But again, the purpose of that is to see how the student is performing against peers across the country. And then we have additional intervention levels at that level, which again, the goal being to close that gap and identify where that remediation is needed, and then get the student back to as close to grade level as possible. But we know the sooner we can do that in the early primary years, the better off we are, because if we can close it kindergarten for a second, we're likely gonna be able to, that's likely going to be successful. So it's a really a big push at the lower elementary, but we have a system in place, K12.
Thank you.
Sure. Hey, other questions? I see none, so I thank you very much. Okay. Hey, we're moving to our comments from the audience portion. We have two speakers signed up tonight, so I'll just quickly summarize the protocols here, just we do welcome comments from the community and the audience. And at this board, we use the best practice of assigning 30 minutes total for 10 different speakers. We only have two tonight, and we do limit that to three minutes per speaker. And our district clerk will run the timer on that. So when you hear that bell, if you could kind of wrap it up, we'd appreciate that. Also, anything you have in writing, please submit it to the district clerk, and they'll make sure all the board members get that. We do read these communications. So we'll start with, we have Jim Perrin, and then we have Mike McCullough. So we'll start with Jim, if you can come forward, thank you.
Do you have a microphone, Captain?
No, one of them's good for you.
All right.
All right. Thanks for having me. My name is Jim Perrin, I'm the Deputy Chief of the Cisro Fire Department, also sit on the Yonah County Fire Advisory Board. So we are all here tonight, you see a bunch of the members in other town departments here. Really, just pleading with you guys to adopt the New York State Real Property Tax Law 466A. This allows first responders a 10% property tax discount. Beginning of the year, the Fire Advisory Board put out a survey to county firefighters, and 90% of those responses came back with two issues, time restraint and financial relief. Departments can handle or help with the. Departments can handle or help with the time restraint. And a lot of us are making changes to best utilize our members' time that is available. Is for financials, we can't provide us any financials without changing New York State laws. This law is already in place. All it involves is your board to vote and adopt it and put it in effect with the town assessor. So the volunteers can take advantage of this. In 2016, FASNAD did a study and, and found out that volunteer firefighters throughout the country save taxpayers $3 billion. The town of Cicero firefighters, all five departments in the town saves town of Cicero taxpayers four to $5 million yearly just for providing a volunteer fire service. Our town departments all work together to provide the school with standby crews and trained EMTs and equipment at the football games and the events happening at the stadium. And as well, we saw in Buffalo, that's much needed asset and service that we all provide for free. Our members take the time out to keep their training up to date. That also allows us to provide this. This current school year, we also came in and worked with NAVAC, when I believe it's an adult class. Mr. Crabtree, you talked about it a couple of weeks ago, the, the special adult class they have. I, I, I thought you did, but a correction if I, if you didn't. But anyway, we came in and we went over some of the training. We did some fire extinguisher training with them and went through some skills that we do with this class to hopefully maybe in the future gets, gains their interest in our service. Again, all we're doing, we're asking you to adopt this law that's already into effect. Is this a fix-all? Absolutely not. But it's a start to help volunteer firefighters and ambulance responders to help assist the financials with their families. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Mr. Piccolo?
Not easy following an app. So I appreciate you all having me the ability to speak. I just wanted to say the last couple of weeks, it's been, I hate to turn my head. I apologize. It's been a fantastic display of different municipalities working together. So Jillian, Don, the board, I, I appreciate it. There's been a lot of back and forth. A lot of education on everyone's parts. That's been fantastic. I mainly want to speak on a little bit more about more specifically what uh Jim was talking about. And then the four main reasons why, and you all have that memo from the tax assessor from the uh town of Cicero. So Jim Perrin is an amazing individual, but he's wrong about the savings. It's 3.8 billion back in 2016 in New York State alone, just to give you that, not across the country. Sorry to make that correction, Jim. So big thing too, is taxpayers across the state would know, if we had to go to paid crews across the state, everyone's tax would go up by 35%. This was dated back in 2016. So we all know now, nothing has gone down in cost. So that's the big thing I wanted to point out in that sheet. The four main reasons and how it'll help. So these are yours and I know you all have that memo. So options available under the new law 466A. So this would allow proposed maximum of 10% of the assessed value of the property for the town, part of town, special district and fire district, exclusive of a special district. Currently, there's a cap of 3,000. This new law would allow it to actually be that 10%. So currently the school, town, highway are all capped at $3,000. This would establish a minimum service requirement of between two and five years. Currently, this service requirement is a minimum of five years. This would give us the ability to really recruit and get individuals to come and say, you can start receiving this benefit in your second year of service instead of having to wait for the five years. That's another huge one. Recruitment's big. We are losing volunteer firefighters across the state. That's why this is so key. The third is allow, allow unmarried spouses, sorry, I'm really loud into the microphone. Allow unmarried spouses of workers killed in the line of duty to continue receiving exemption, provided that such deceased volunteer has been an enrolled member for at least five years and had been receiving the exemption prior to his or her death. And then the fourth is allow unmarried spouses of deceased volunteer firefighters who had been an enrolled member for at least 20 years and had been receiving the exemption prior to his or her death. So that would be maintaining that even past that volunteer's death. And then going back to the second page, I know cost is a big, 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 big priority. So the total exemption amount with the maximum increase of 10% assessed value would equal up to $31,000 for those 57 individuals that are currently receiving this. And again, it will be more than 57. So if we did that, it'd be about $60,000 total that would affect the school district. Going back to $60,000 to 3.7 billion. I think that's a no-brainer. There is a time period on this. That's the big thing too. I know I heard the bell. The town of Cicero is putting this on our agenda as of Wednesday and we will be, you know, voting on it in February. The county is voting on this and expected to approve this tomorrow during their uh proceedings. It would be fantastic if the school board could jump on this before March 1st. Cause as you know, March 1st is that deadline for this year, being able to go, you know, that the volunteers getting that tax assessment for this coming year. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Hey, thank you. We have Board of Education Committee reports. If I could uh have Dr. Leahy just quick report on policy, please?
Just, just a comment on that is that it has to go before the voters of this district. So I'm hoping this policy moves through. Because if we don't have a certain time, Jill has to have things to the papers and things about voting. So our, our time period is very short. And I, I truly believe that a student should be on this Board of Education.
Okay. Legislative report. Mr. Crabtree.
We are going to have a meeting on February 1st. I know that we have been meeting with Senator Mannion and Assemblywoman Hunter and Assemblyman Sterpy. But I decided our next meeting to have them come. Uh, they will be in Albany. They will be in session, but because of virtual, they're going to come on and tell us, instead of going the other way around, we're going to let them talk to us what they feel is important to the education of New York State um students. Little different.
Okay, thank you. Um, in the Bosse's report, you did refer, you did have forwarded us by Jill and
Right. You have a Bosse's um report. Are there any questions? Um, just to let you know that we will be visiting um OCMBosse's. It looks like almost half of us are going. Uh, it's on, um, help me out, February 3rd. And we'll be meeting at uh the Thompson Road, um, the Thompson Road um campus. I do have a few things with legislator that I did mention is that February 4th, there's a virtual Central New York School Board Association meeting, which I think some of are going. If haven't, please sign up with Jill. It's going to be virtual from nine to 10:30 and we'll be meeting with all of our legislators in Central New York, along with superintendents and Board of Education members. And then on the 13th is the New York State School Boards Association Capital Conference, which is also virtual. That is an excellent con- conference. I believe it starts at 9:30, goes to 12:30. This is where everyone uh involved in legislation in New York State will be together. The New York School Boards Association, the governor's office, she will have some people there. Board members, superintendents. So if you want to sign up for that, you do that through Jill and that's it.
And that, that's on the 10th of February, I think.
I think it's the 13th. I might've made a mistake.
I believe it was.
Is it the 10th? Could be. It's the 10th.
Okay, because that, that is a, goes hand in hand with uh the lobby day, the in-person lobby day, which is 15th, which is a Wednesday uh, which at this time I, I do plan on driving out to make a visit with the NISBA group on that day. So far I have two appointments. So I'll keep you guys posted on that. Superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Um, first I, I want to acknowledge the, our varsity wrestling team. Um, they won sectionals. Um, they did an outstanding job and um our, our coaches really shaped that program and uh they were uh really proud. So again, hats off to our, our wrestling team. Um, I want to acknowledge this past Friday, I uh attended the National Business Honor Society Recognition at CNS uh Friday morning. There were 23 students as well as their parents were there. And uh they are many students that you've seen in other areas of, of our, of our district and programs. And uh the best of the best, uh, you will see them in the future because they are truly uh remarkable. Uh, just some of our activities, uh, girls basketball played Webster out of Rochester in a tough match. Again, uh, they uh fought hard, but they, they could not uh keep up with some of the, the talents of a few young ladies on the other team. And I think boys then were at Nottingham the same night and they lost by two. Don and I recently were at a meeting uh with Al Sterpy and other superintendents from Liverpool, Favel Manlius, Casanova and ESM. And we talked about some of the needs that we all shared in common. Uh, in particular, uh, I've heard that we've talked about uh food insecurity. That was something trying to get something passed so food uh would be available for, for all students. Uh, we talked about expanding fund balance beyond 4%. In case of an emergency, uh, having um that uh, that ability would uh really bode well for the district. And just about the, the formula uh and foundation aid. Those things were many of the things that we had in common. Um, but it was good to be able to sit in front of Al Sterpy and, and share our concerns. And that is all.
Thank you. Board of Education comments, any comments for good of the order here?
Yes, Mr. Crabtree, you know, I like to talk. Terry mentioned universal meals for all children. The federal government dropped this after COVID. It is so important in this district. It doesn't matter if you're in Cicero, Mattydale, Clay, we have children starving in this district. We have poverty that is the, it's just unbelievable. Please, board members, I, you, it came through again today. Please send the governor. Please send Al Sterpy. Please send Senator Mannion that we need universal meals for all children. Children will not learn in school unless they have something in their stomach. So Terry, thank you for mentioning that earlier. The other thing that came up at our Bosse's meeting, uh, we asked the superintendent, there's a blue ribbon committee in this state. Um, happens to be the superintendent, I believe, but the writer is on it. Dan may know a little bit more about this. And a teaching assistant from Cortland. They are looking at graduation requirements. They're looking at real differences in what we have today in order to graduate from CNS. I believe you received something. There's a survey. I got it through the New York School Boards. It took me about 20 minutes, but I put my opinion down of what I feel a senior at CNS or high school students need to have. This is going to move quickly. They are going to make a decision on this over the summer and then bring it back to the communities for, for what you think about it. It's not going to be a two-year, three-year committee. It's going to come back. So I wanted the board members to be aware uh of changes in graduation requirements. And then I always like to go into Mr. Bowles when he talks about sports. And um, it's like the ESPY Awards Xavier, you know, the ESPY Awards where they give the football player. Well, we have them in Central New York. And you have to be in the top four of your school, I mean, the top four to possibly win this award. And we had many in the fall. Boys soccer, Wyatt Dupell. Boys volleyball, Joy, Joe Siegler. Field hockey, field hockey team went, went all the way to the state finals. Uh, Chrissy Wagner, uh, girls cross country. We talk about her all the time, Kate Putnam. And girls swimming, we have Caitlin Carroll. These are the best of the best. And I love it when I see them instead of Liverpool and East Syracuse, CNS is at the top. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Hey, as we move into routine action items, I'll just note that we have three board members, uh, Dr. Kramer, Mr. Marizio and Mr. Thorn that are skews tonight uh with conflict. Now we have five, oh, and Miss Segrew had to had a commitment. Okay, so I'll look for help here as we need motions and seconds in our limited field. I need a motion to put the minutes of the meeting of January 9th, 2023 before us, please. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Posed, that is carried. Thank you very much. I'd like a motion to place B, C and D together. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. These are the classification and placement of disabled students for school, preschool and home instruction by the appropriate committees. That is before us, B, C and D. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, those items are carried. Motion, please to place policies A through E in front of us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Dr. Leahy discussed the policy committee and we have the policy, the five policies they brought forward to us before us, A through E on your agenda. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, those are carried. Thank you. Have retirements to acknowledge today. We have one. And that is Janet Brefka, our Director of Special Education, who is retiring with a total of 32 years of service. She did in two different uh stints basically with us. So we thank her for that service and wish her luck in a long and healthy retirement. Structural personnel report, A, if I get a motion to place that before us, motion from Mr. Herman, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on A? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, A is carried. Thank you. And support staff personnel report B, please a motion, motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. B is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And administrative personnel report C. Motion to place that before us, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second. A motion is going to be to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one legal item with no action to follow and to review two personnel matters with no action to follow. If I should get it, if I could get a second. Second from Mr. Herman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. And a motion, please for adjournment, motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Herman. All in favor? Posed, that is carried. We are adjourned at 6:48. Thank you. Thank you.